Hello and welcome to Scarborough Schools Roundtable. The purpose of these roundtables is to keep the community informed of the important work that's happening out there in the Scarborough schools. And I've invited key school leaders here to sit with me this afternoon. And we're going to be talking about the progress being made on our 18-month improvement plan. We've been monitoring the plan, we've been reporting out on a fairly regular basis to the school board, and I'm pleased to say that the progress that's being made in all of the schools is impressive. The improvement plan, as you know, was the product of our first Scarborough Schools Community Dialogue that happened in October 2011. So we're just about 14 months into the plan. And a second Community Dialogue is planned for April 23rd of this year. I'll ask each of my guests to introduce themselves, and I'll start to my left.
My name is Barbara Hathorn, I'm the principal at the middle school.
David Courier, Assistant Principal at the middle school.
Anne Mary Dexter, Principal at Wentworth Intermediate School.
Anne Lovejoy, Principal, Eight Corners School.
Mike LaGage, Director of Athletics and Student Activities.
Dean Arama, Principal of the high school.
Jen Nichman, I'm Director of IT for the town and the school.
Okay. And we have just enough time to really highlight the initiatives across the schools which will serve to be representative of the improvement work that's ongoing. We've printed out the sections of the plan that will help guide our discussion today. Are we ready to begin?
Yes.
Okay. We'll start with Goal 1, a good place to start and a very important goal focused on world-class learning, and that is to provide world-class teaching and learning to ensure that each student is prepared to thrive in all the spheres of living. And I think we'll start at the K-2 level. And the K-2 principals, Anne, identified exploring best practices in technology integration aligned with defined 21st century skills. What is that about?
Well, that's a huge project that we've had this year. We've got new equipment, including iPads and projectors in every classroom, as well as new laptops that actually work really well and are up to date, which is exciting. Kids are coming in, it's kind of funny, kids are coming in and not knowing how to use a keyboard or a mouse because all they do is touchscreen. They all know how to use a smartphone or an iPad, but many of them don't have computer skills in the traditional sense, so we're learning that we have to step back a second and do those, although they learn them very quickly. But I think the exciting thing is, is with the projectors and the iPads and the computers that work when we need them to work, our teachers are able to seamlessly integrate technology into every subject matter, into every content area, all day long, without carting a cart down the hall, without hooking something else up differently, without any sort of interruption. Every teacher has what they need at their fingertips at all times. And I think the kids are also getting exposure to other pieces of technology. And, you know, there's so much out there in the world that technology brings into the classroom that exposes them to things that they'd never be able to see or do without it. So it's just expanded everything we do in every way.
And how are the students responding?
Oh, they're so motivated. It's really exciting to watch them try something on an iPad that they might have tried to do with a flashcard before, and that was kind of old and mundane, but with an iPad and some fun sound or something, it's all brand-new and exciting. Kids are making a lot of progress with a lot of different kinds of technology in the classroom.
Great. World-class teaching and learning. The Wentworth Intermediate School identified continued implementation of a math curriculum and focusing on the instructional quality in math. Anne Mary, why don't you talk a little bit about that?
I have to say how important this has been for us. The math programming, the patterns that children create in their thinking are part of what math is all about. And to get a strong sense of number and to get a key understanding of those basic elements are critical. And if our students don't get those within our K-2 programming, within our 3-5 programming, then those elements can't be mastered or fostered in any way with the more difficult concepts that they have when they reach the middle school. So one of the things that we've been, our K-5 effort, but clearly to speak to the intermediate effort, has been a math in focus, which is our brand-new implementation of our math curriculum. This program has been a very significant departure from our past programming because old programming was look at a book, look at numbers, do something with it, and report out. This programming has involved teachers teaching teachers. It has involved bringing in national consultants who've come in to actually work with us. And now, in our year and a half into the programming, we're actually able to now be the consultants in that our staff have developed wonderful skills, talents, and abilities to work with the children, but also to invite other school districts to come and see what we're actually doing in our school. Another significant part of this that we hadn't done in the past was, we have actually had annual parent evenings. The evenings have been designed differently. Instead of a sit-and-get, the parents actually are coming in and teachers are teaching them what the children are learning every day in school, using the materials and getting a good hang of what math is all about in this day and age, the kind of math that moves our kids forward. So I think it's a thrill, and we're really looking forward to looking at our pre-test data, making connections with the Common Core, all of those things that are essential to our being able to move these children from the kindergarten program right up through to our eighth-grade math, significant math program that feeds right into our high school.
So are you on track with the progress that you were hoping to make?
We certainly are. I think we've found that of the 34 classrooms that we have in our building, we're at full implementation for every single classroom at this point in the year. And now we're looking to deepen that work and to look at the assessments more fully.
That's great. Moving to the middle school, develop a language arts literacy plan that incorporates the Common Core. We do have another one of our roundtables is scheduled in the upcoming months. One of them will focus on the Common Core. We talk about it a lot, I don't think that people necessarily understand it. Barbara, maybe you can include a brief explanation of what Common Core is, but tell us about the progress on the literacy plan.
Well, understanding that the Common Core will be taking effect in the state of Maine in 1415, we knew that we had a lot of work to do with our language arts curriculum. We added the springboard materials to our curriculum, which helps us align our work to the Common Core. And Common Core is a set of very rigorous standards, and our students are doing a fabulous job meeting those standards. The standards address reading, writing, speaking, listening, and media literacy that are aligned to 21st century skills and knowledge. My staff is doing a fabulous job. They're doing work with formative assessments, which is informing their teaching. Students are absolutely aware of what they're learning every day, and so their pathway to their learning is very clear. They know what is expected of them and what they have to master in order to meet those standards, those rigorous standards.
So what's the status of this language arts literacy plan?
It's moving forward very quickly. The teachers are working very hard. They're working on their own after-school together. They are working during the day together. Their professional learning teams are very, they're very engaged in those PLTs to improve their own learning, because these standards are so much higher than what they're used to. They are putting in a lot of preparation for our kids.
And you made some reference to PLTs or professional learning teams. Again, one of the upcoming roundtables will focus on professional learning teams so that we get a good explanation out there to the community about what PLTs are all about. Dean, at the Scarborough High School, the work has been around instructional and curriculum frameworks. Can you tell us about that?
Sure. I think very much in line with what Barb said. Our main goal is to have the activities that the students are engaged in be aligned with not just standards within the local state of Maine, but also the nation, or if you will, the world. And we all know that the Common Core State Standards are standards that are set for both college and the workplace, that there really is no difference between the level of expectation of skillset or cognitive ability that students need to be able to perform in both either their choice of school or their choice to go right to work. So, but the instructional curriculum framework is a document that basically explains to all teachers the components of how we're developing our curriculum, so that regardless of a department or a program, be it math, or science, or social studies, we're all working on common, universal ideas, essential questions, key vocabulary, habits of mind. So the teachers have been hard at work and working at components of that. Two of the main components being common exams and the other one being Common Course Frameworks.
And how are the students responding to the common exams?
I think at first they were surprised that they were having the same exams that their peers were having. And what they saw right away, there was an automatic blanket accountability that regardless of the class you were in, and regardless of the level of class, that there was a certain core amount of information that's tied to the Common Core State Standards, or at least that's the goal, that you're going to thoughtfully be accountable for as you work toward fulfilling your needs to earn your diploma. So I think it was interesting for them to have kind of like it level out, and for them to be able to talk about, oh, we're all being tested on similar things regardless of who we have for class.
So, in general, that is Goal 1. In general, we've only touched upon pieces of the work that you're doing in each of the schools. Would you say that things are on target for each of your schools in terms of Goal 1 and the work that you've taken on?
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. Teachers are doing a wonderful job.
I think the staff are taking this very seriously, and I certainly know we are in our efforts to move our system forward. And I think staff are very committed, and I think they're committed to their own learning, which is what makes it a deliverable product so that children will gain that much more.
Very good. Okay, Goal 2, an important goal. Let me read it. "Ensuring a welcoming and inclusive learning environment that guarantees the safety of all school community members, fosters meaningful relationship building, and promotes the physical, social, and emotional well-being of all." Very lofty, a big goal, and particularly important given some recent developments across the country. Let's start with, again, the primary schools. Anne, the community supported a budget this past year that allowed us to restore some services that were there previously that were lost in budget cuts. One of those, and a high priority for the K-2 principals, was the primary guidance curriculum piece. Can you talk about that? The goal for K-2 was to develop and implement K-2 guidance curriculum aligned with the 3-12 program. In other words, it's the sort of the prerequisite piece to the rest of the guidance curriculum. How's that going?
It's going very well. We have been fortunate enough to hire somebody with 12 years of experience at the K-2 guidance level, and so she brings just a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of experience and knowledge to the position. I personally, and I think we can all agree, that children don't learn, no matter how old they are, what grade they're in, unless they feel safe, and unless they feel welcome, and unless they feel like they belong there. And I think that's what primary guidance is all about. It's not necessarily career exploration, and what college are you going to go to at second grade? It's how do you get along in a classroom with 20 kids? How do you get along in a school with 250 kids? How do you then get along in a school that's bigger? How do you get along in your community? And how do you learn to be an upstanding citizen? And whether that means good listening, being kind to others, being respectful, being safe, being resourceful, all of those things are included. And it's really, the whole group lessons that the guidance is able to offer are just really valuable because it brings the school into a community where we're all using the same language, we're all using similar expectations. Is that expected behavior or unexpected behavior? Are you being safe? Are you being respectful? Are you being responsible? Those words are in every classroom, every day, in every area of the school, hallways, classrooms, cafeteria, playground. So kids are really learning what it means to be a part of the larger community, and how to learn, and how to behave so that you can learn and so others can learn. And that's the key, because when they go up to higher grades and harder things, they need those skills.
It's the, everything that was important that I needed to learn, I learned in kindergarten.
Exactly.
So it's a reintroduction of guidance at the K-2 level. Are the schools feeling an impact already?
I believe so. I believe that the level of experience that we brought into the program has helped, because she was not, even though she was new to the system, she wasn't new to guidance, and that made a big difference. She was ready to jump in in Week 1 with classroom lessons. She's really worked hard to incorporate what we've already been doing and have been doing for the last four or five years before guidance was cut. She's really built on that and is trying to incorporate that into her curriculum and her knowledge base as well. So she's done a really great job, and I think being in all three schools is a challenge, but she's, you know, it's really been, made a big difference in our schools to have that whole group thinking.
Very good. Following that same theme, that same mode of thinking, particularly around that sense of belonging, and I'll just move to the middle school. David, you've been very instrumental in creating the Connections Program. And the goal was develop, implement, and advisory program, which essentially Connections is. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Sure. Our goal of the Connections Program is to have each student connected with more than one adult in our building, and we found that that's very important. It's a very important part, similar to Anne, what you had mentioned, as far as safety in the building, making the connection with the adults, and learning those skills that will help them transition through the middle school and into the high school.
What are some of the activities that have, I know that teachers have been encouraged to think of different activities to do with these groups of students that they have, that they're basically building the connections with. What are some of the ones that have been most successful?
Some of the activities that we have seen that have been very successful have been group collaborative games. For example, the Connections Program would be set up with sixth graders in one group, seventh graders in another group, and so on. So they're each grade grouped as grade level. And to be able to work with students that they normally wouldn't work with, and teachers that they normally wouldn't work with, has been awesome. But again, the activities have been collaborative activities that we've seen excellent work with.
Team-building.
Team-building, yes.
And speaking of teams, at the high school, Mike, I think we also recognize that there's some responsibility that we're, this sense of responsibility that we're trying to build in students. And student voice, respectfully having a voice in things that affect you, is one of those areas that we're trying to build student skill. And in athletics, which comes under the high school section here, the goal was create a student advisory council for athletics and activities with the goal of enhancing student voice. Can you tell us about that?
Sure. I'm real excited to share, actually. I think this is a shining star for Scarborough because we've been a leader in our league. Our league, as you know, is called the SMA. It's made up of 17 schools in western Maine. And Scarborough has been the school that has actually started a student advisory council for our league, and was, and two of our students were the founding participants of the statewide student advisory council through the Maine Principals Association. As you know, the Maine Principals Association is one of the governing groups for athletics and student activities in the state. And so they started a student advisory council. Two of our students that attended a leadership conference in the summer were the, two of the founding people involved in the statewide group. It was through discussions with those students that we said, jeez, we really should do something locally. And so Scarborough actually was the students in the school that started our league-wide. That's going to eventually morph into doing something within our school, too. Our involvement at the school level has been to get the whole thing started statewide and our league-wide. But I think anytime you get students involved in their own learning is a positive experience for them. And so this provides that opportunity. It provides students an opportunity to have a voice in the business of athletics and activities. And in fact, we just had our league meeting today, and we talked about how that group is going to be extremely important in the day-to-day work of the league, in using them as a true advisory group to respond to certain things that we may even have questions about as adults and how that impacts students and their learning.
So would it be fair to say that creating the opportunity, students have stepped up to that opportunity to have a say, to have a voice?
Absolutely. I mean, we have, we're, we have two strong student leaders right now, and we have, each team, as you know, each program, as you know, has standout student leaders. We're very successful in our department, between athletics and our activities. And so consequently, we're very fortunate in Scarborough to have a lot of student leaders. And all of them, we have many students that have stepped forward. So I think it's going to be an easy transition to continue to have Scarborough lead kind of the parade, if you will, of this initiative.
Terrific. Okay, Goal 3. I'll read it. "Developing each student the skills for engaged citizenship locally and globally, the insight and appreciation of one's own and others' cultures, and the disposition to use individual talents to make positive changes in the world." Again, pretty lofty stuff. These are long-range goals. We tried to incrementally get closer, recognizing that that goal is always going to be bigger than where we land. We'll start at the Wentworth School, and let me just pull that up here, Anne Mary. "Use current developmentally appropriate activities, age-appropriate activities, to expand opportunities to engage students and staff in service to the community, community service." We talk a lot about it. We had some interesting discussions about transactional, sort of raising money to give to such-and-such versus interactional, which is using my skills and talents as a, as a fourth grader, maybe, or as a high school student, whatever it may be, using my skills to make a difference in the world. And our focus has really been, yes, the transactional, making money for certain things is good, or collecting canned goods, or whatever, is good, but we also want students, as best possible, to recognize that they can use their skills and talents and make a difference. So what has been happening over at Wentworth in terms of community service?
I'm pleased that you took the time to explain that difference, because many of the foundational activities that go on with young children are, here's the goal, let's see if we can get mommy or daddy to come and help. And oftentimes, we're very successful in the young ages in getting that goal met, whether it's to stuff a bus, or whether it's to collect mittens and hats. But when you really get to the bottom line of it, who is actually participating in that activity? And while we appreciate having parents fully engage and help their children to connect that lesson of, we're giving something of yours to someone else, it really takes on a different level when the child does it by him or herself. So our staff have really been looking at that a little differently over this because of, frankly, the 18-month plan. It was to really analyze a little bit closer, what is it that we really are doing, and what is the benefit, and how are children actually going to gain from this type of an experience? I think I have a couple different experiences that we've had at Wentworth that, to me, embody this whole notion. Hall School recently, for example, had a very sad thing happen to them because they had a fire, and it wiped out hundreds of dollars' worth of individual teachers, classroom materials. Books were an essential element, a core element that was gone. With our emphasis on looking at our reading program at Wentworth as well, our kids began to say, well, wait a minute. When one classroom, the idea sprung very naturally, shouldn't we get books for them? Well, not only did it take on the bring books in from your home, it took on a genre study where children actually looked at the type of book that they were going to contribute. So that was, it lended naturally to their learning. It also took on a categorizing, Skyping, writing letters and conversation, then actually taking a bus trip to the school, delivering, meeting the children, delivering the books, meeting the children. There was that ultimate connection from an idea to the full follow-through for the children. 1,600 books.
Wow.
So that's a perfect example of how do we get our children to take activities that they're doing all the time and reach another part of our community. Another example we had was our storytellers. The children who have gone through, again, a notable process of learning for themselves, then they have turned around, hopped on a bus, and gone out into the, to our community, Scarborough community, and worked with the citizens, and actually worked with our seniors and told them stories. So I think those are some examples of the type of thing that happened.
Nice examples. And again, the transactional pieces are important, the stuff the bus, those, the warm coats for kids without coats and so on, I think is terrific. But moving in the direction of interactional, and the Hall School in Portland, the example that you provided, really moves into service learning, because it was a service project that there was very active learning on the part of our students. It's terrific. And Jen, new IT director, not only for the schools, but for the entire town. I know from the perspective of the schools, terrific add to our team, and we're so appreciative to have you. Can you talk a little bit, there was, there's a technology goal here, I'm not sure that you owned it, because you were not here when it was created, but the focus was to, from technology, to create virtual opportunities for communicating and collaborating with the community. And I think that technology, we've come to realize, is so critically important to the way that we communicate with each other, how we work collaboratively, how we communicate with parents, and to important stakeholders in the community. Thoughts or ideas that you have in terms of that area?
I think joining the school district really has been an eye-opening experience for me in terms of how integral technology is to the learning process. I think we've been trying to sort of meet the four Cs of the Technology in the 21st Century Plan, so collaboration, communication, creative thinking, and critical thinking. And I think the schools are doing some really fabulous things with the technology that's being put out there. I heard that there were a couple of classes, I think Anne Mary mentioned it, I know that in Anne's school they're doing this, too. They're using Skype to actually collaborate with some different towns to work on different projects. I think Gorham Schools was one of them. I know with the iPads, you know, rolling the iPads out, that's been a huge benefit to the schools and to the students. There are some fabulous apps for education that are available out there. We are trying to move towards Google Apps, Google for Schools, to basically increase the collaboration that the kids can do and try to share all of their work. So I think we're moving in that direction.
That's terrific. But in a very short period of time, you've been an important, you've become a very important contributor. I know that you've worked with some of the professional learning teams. Anything that you want to say about that work?
One of the things that we're working on right now is, it's a fabulous project at the high school that one of the PLTs is working on, is actually filming some students from a math class who are problem-solving. And then they tape that, they edit it, and then they load it to YouTube. And so students who are at home who are having trouble trying to solve the problems can actually log onto YouTube, and they can get help from their peers. So we've tried to help out with that by providing the technology to not only film it, but also to edit it and help them post it. So that's been exciting for us.
Terrific. Those are the three goals that I wanted to address in this first roundtable. The fourth goal involves our connection with the community, and this is part of basically achieving that. achieving that goal, is to create a stronger link with the community to advise them about the important and the really good work that's happening in the Scarborough schools. I will offer a minute for any of you to talk about anything that you wish to cover that I somehow didn't allow you to get to. Mike, any thoughts about the 18-month improvement plan, the work that you have ongoing?
I think we're real excited about the possibility of professional development opportunities for our coaches. And one thing that's going to be our focus moving forward is, is to, we have great coaches, we have great club advisors, we want to retain those folks. And so how can we provide them some professional development opportunities for their own growth and development? And so that's going to be a focus for our department moving forward.
That's great.
I was going to say at the K-2 level that we're very excited about everything that's been going on based on the 18-month plan. I think it's been exciting for all of us to have a vision and to have these goals and these targets to work towards as collaboratively and collectively. It's made a huge difference in our focus at the buildings.
And I think also knowing that these ideas, though we have gelled them in a pattern that's made it work within our schools, I think the fact that they came from the community and the community was offered this opportunity is a very important element to this being successful.
I agree. I'm very excited about the common threads that we have weaving throughout each school and the fact that a lot of our ideas have come from the community, and we have worked together to move our schools forward.
And I think Anne Mary mentioned this, but I'm very proud of the staff because they have owned this entirely. They're working very hard and they're very focused, and I'm very proud of them.
I think as a parent of a child who has moved on from kindergarten and is now in high school, I've, and being new here, I'm so impressed by the level of the staff, the dedication of the teachers and the principals and everybody who's involved in terms of taking our kids through the entire system, and the dedication to the 18-month plan, the fact that you guys really took seriously the feedback that was coming back from the community. And I'm just, I'm happy to be involved.
And I know Dr. Entwister is going to talk about it in the future, but today being a late start date and having the chance as a principal to walk around and see one of numerous professional learning team conversations and just watching the teachers interact with each other, and some of them are actually getting to the point of implementation, or some of them have moved beyond implementation, are talking about the little qualitative or quantitative data they've gathered and kind of problem-solving, how the students are now reacting to their in-classroom, not experiments, but trial and error situations, is very fulfilling, I think, as a school leader. And I know that's having an impact on the classroom as well, that that energy and that excitement that's created by the collaboration of that group is having an impact. And I think that the second piece is just the energy that comes from our students. We all can share that, that while we're really proud of our staff and they're working very hard, we know that our students, our student athletes, they give us back 10 times what we're able to invest in them, and that's really energizing and very exciting to be a part of.
And it's exciting for me to work with a team that has really dedicated themselves to the 18-month plan, to the improvement. You all developed the plans for your schools and were ambitious. The great news is that that ambition has really paid off. There's been tremendous improvements that we can see across all of the schools, across all of the departments. And so it's a pleasure, as a relatively new superintendent, to work with a team that has dedicated themselves in such a way. Just a reminder that the 18-month plan did come from the community dialogue. The second community dialogue, again, for members in the community and all stakeholders, all members of the community are invited to attend, and that will be April 23rd, 2013. So we're looking for, we had 400 this, in 2011. Let's say we shoot for 600 participants in 2013.